Good evening, welcome to the November 7th, 2022 regular meeting of the Planning Commission. I will not call the meeting to order. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
It'd be my honor.
Please rise, everyone. Place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Harper, will you please take roll?
Sure. Chair Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
And Commissioner Massetti.
I'm here.
Thank you.
So where is the entrance? Press home to unlock.
By motion of the Planning Commission, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. At this time, we'd also like to include the excused absence of Commissioner Campbell. Is there a motion in a second?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
And excuse Commissioner Campbell.
City Clerk Harper? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, oral communications at this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, we received one email comment. It has been distributed to the commissioners and made available to the public on the city's website.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for oral communications? No. The consent calendar approval of the October 3rd, 2022 Planning Commission minutes. Do we have a motion in a second?
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. On to the public hearing, Zone Text Amendment 22-3 amending Section 11 dot 4 dot 05 dot 135, the Seal Beach Municipal Code regarding short-term rentals citywide. Is there a report?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. Yes, there is a report this evening, and I'll be giving it. Whoa, hold on. Get that on. Alright, there we go. This evening's item is regarding the city of Seal Beach's zoning code, which currently prohibits short-term rentals in residential zones. And the definition of a short-term rental is a housing rental that is available for less than 29 days. Over 29 days would be considered a long-term rental and is allowed. There are currently 14 units that about a decade ago were received conditional use permits to operate as short-term rentals, and these are currently the only short-term rentals that are allowed within the city. We do know that there are a handful of unpermitted short-term rentals. They do often become code enforcement cases, and we, you know, continue to try to track them and keep an eye on things that are going on, but we have a little bit of experience, in summary, with short-term rentals here in the city. This item is in front of you this evening due to two recently published appellate court cases, and both of them essentially stated that short-term rentals cannot be prohibited in the coastal zone, and that is a violation, that being a violation of the Coastal Act. The idea behind the Coastal Act, or one of the ideas behind the Coastal Act, is access to the coast. So on September 26th, the city council took action to suspend enforcement of that section of the zoning code and directed staff to present a program for short-term rentals. So this process will begin, like most zone text amendments, tonight is the first opportunity for the public to weigh in through a public hearing and for the Planning Commission to consider this change to the zoning code. The results of the Planning Commission action will be presented to the city council, along with the ordinance amending the zoning code at another public hearing. And in this case, we will need to take it one step further. So following the city council approval of a revised short-term rental ordinance, staff will pursue a coastal development permit through the Coastal Commission. So I'd like to dig into the revised program here a little bit, starting with some of the bigger issues. What's proposed tonight is for some short-term, for some short-term rentals is limited to the coastal zone, so it is not citywide, and that's essentially south of Westminster Boulevard is the coastal zone. Staff is also recommending limiting the number of short-term rentals to 1% of the housing stock within the coastal zone. Based on county assessor data, this was result in 45 units being allowed. These would be net new units, as the program does not apply to those units that have existing conditional use permits which run with the land. We are proposing to allow only one short-term rental per owner. This is an attempt to discourage external investors from purchasing a bunch of properties and making them short-term rentals. Units are intended to supply permanent affordable housing are not able to be short-term rentals. So this would include deed-restricted units with affordability covenants, junior accessory dwelling units, these are prohibited for short-term rental by state law as well, and then also accessory dwelling units that were built after state ADU laws came into effect in January 1st, 2020. The state implementation of these new laws is about creating new housing for people to live in. It's not about creating a bunch of little mini hotels. The program requires that an owner identify a local contact person that is available to respond to issues 24 hours a day and bring the unit and/or existing guests into compliance with the ordinance and any other applicable city laws, like the noise ordinance and so forth. Large parties, events, and weddings would be prohibited. In alignment with state health and safety codes, the number of persons allowed in the unit would be per, I'm sorry, two per bedroom plus two. So for example, a two-bedroom unit, you could have two people in each bedroom, and then an additional two for a total of six people that would be allowed. Rules for city codes must be posted in the unit in clear view for the tenants to abide by, and the exterior of the unit must not market itself as a short-term rental. In terms of how the units would be determined, with the limit of 45 units proposed, a programmatic approach would be developed with timelines. Those wishing to own one of the short-term rentals would submit a preliminary application and be placed into a lottery drawing to be held on a set date. On an annual basis, permits that are compliant with the short-term rental ordinance would be eligible for renewal, but permits in this case do not run with the land, so a change in ownership would end the short-term rental permit for that unit. Short-term rental owners, just like the existing owners of the CUP rentals, must have a business license, and they must pay transient occupancy taxes. As a part of the permit process, staff would confirm the appropriate insurance and identification is in place, and finally, homeowner associations may continue to enforce their own provisions prohibiting short-term rentals. There are some potential benefits associated with short-term rentals. For example, people staying here would patronize local businesses, and you would have sort of a steady influx of new people that get to rediscover our small businesses, particularly in Main Street and near the coast. We would see an increase in revenues, particularly from transient occupancy tax. And then hopefully, we would be in compliance with the Coastal Act, which is kind of the reason we're all here in the first place, wanting to make sure that we are not put at risk there. But it is, it's hard to tell where we will end up on that front exactly. The Coastal Act is about access to the coast, and the Coastal Commission's interpretation of what constitutes access is something we can't completely know at this time. There's been a lot of movement on short-term rentals in recent years, and for example, the Coastal Commission just approved a drastic revamp of the city of San Diego's short-term rental ordinance, which drastically reduces the number of short-term rentals that are available. Now, San Diego is a very different animal from us, but it's clear that the Coastal Commission is not saying short-term rentals have to be everywhere all the time. They are allowing limitations. We just don't know exactly what logic will apply here in Seal Beach. And this is really particularly important when we think about the use of housing as a short-term rental, when we look at the situation with the city's housing element. The dozens of state laws that have been passed over the last few years have been aimed at increasing the number of housing units available so that cost would decrease. It's kind of that very simple principle of supply and demand, and it's been more housing, more housing, more housing. So if all of our housing becomes available for short-term rental use, then we're no longer offering people a place to live and are in opposition of what the California Department of Housing and Community Development is looking for in our, in our housing element certification. So staff definitely has concerns about the repercussions for this, and it's a driving reason why we are proposing a limited expansion of short-term rentals at this time. And then last, but certainly not least, people have legitimate concerns about the impacts of short-term rentals and what might happen to their neighborhoods when you have strangers that are, you know, in and out on a regular basis. And we've looked at what other communities are doing with their short-term rental programs to try to put in the best practices, and that's why we have included provisions for a 24-hour-a-day contact person that's local, posting of the rules, making sure that there's parking available. All of those things are an effort to make these good neighborhood partners. And then, of course, we'll be there to enforce the rules if necessary, and essentially with three strikes, you can lose your short-term rental permit. And that's the end of my presentation this evening, and I'm available for your questions.
I have a couple of questions. Where was the, where did the 1% come from?
It's, yeah, there's no magic answer in that. 1% is what San Diego is using, and we were kind of just sort of eyeballing, okay, how much time do we spend in code enforcement, you know, on these units as it is? What do we think our capacity is? What seems manageable? And that's, that's how we were looking at this.
And this will be existing staff for code enforcement?
I hope we can manage that, yeah. I, I don't know, that's a little bit of an, a little bit of an unknown. But like I said, we are trying to design the program so that the rules are very clear, and we make it easy for people to stick to those rules. But yeah, no guarantees, particularly in the summer, that could be challenging.
And the 14 that are currently approved, they're grandfathered in, these rules don't apply to them?
That's correct, yes. Their conditional use permit runs with the land, so they, as long as they're adhering to their conditional use permit, then they operate separate from this.
And how much is the permit for, how much would the permit be for these?
We have not established that fee yet. I'm working with the finance department to estimate those costs, and that will be brought to council for their approval.
Hopefully it's substantial. I mean, this is like the antithesis of everything we've talked about with the housing.
Yeah, yeah, we absolutely want to make sure that we're covering our costs, particularly for enforcement, for, you know, nighttime calls to PD, those types of things.
And the more expensive it is, the less likely people will do it.
Possible, yeah. I don't know what the profit margin is on short-term rentals that might, yeah, it's interesting.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to come, because, you know, I have a lot of friends over in Catalina, for instance, and they have many short-term rentals, and it makes the housing situation unmanageable. Do we give any thought to, because making 40, picking 1%, I understand is arbitrary, but that's actually three times the existing amount right now. I just know it's easier to kind of, it's easier to advance than to back off. So I'm wondering if there's any consideration, because again, we're talking arbitrary here. I, you know, I don't see a lot of people saying, boy, I wish we had more short-term rentals. And I get what's happening here, but could we consider the thought of maybe starting somewhere like half of this, a half a percent, and reviewing it annually or something like that? Again, I, it's a lot harder to take back than it is to, I would prefer us to kind of start at the very low end and then, you know, see how that goes, and then sort of figure out from there, my personal opinion. So, you know, my recommendation would be rather than just kind of jump to like 45, is maybe jump to a half a percent, say 22 and a half homes. The half might be hard, but, but starting somewhere like that and then, you know, see what not, because I get it, I mean, I don't, I don't think, I don't have a problem with limited number of, of new short-term housing. I just don't know what number that is, and like I said, I think I'd rather start small and then come back and look at it. So for what it's worth, you know, I'm just kind of throwing it out there, since the 1% is somewhat arbitrary, and that's fine, I mean, you gotta start somewhere. I would probably start a little bit lower, just because I am aware of in-town some homes that had short-term rentals that have been issues for their neighbors, frankly. And so that's sort of my thinking. I'll open that up to anybody.
Does staff anticipate like a state law coming to, I would assume that everybody that's talked about affordable housing is not in favor of this. Are they, are they working on anything? Have you heard it?
It's, yeah, I mean, there's certainly opposing forces, because it would reduce affordability, yeah.
I'd like to know how it's working out with the 14 that are already short-term rentals.
You know, they've, they've all been in place for, for a decade. It's not that we never get a call, but it's not common. You know, 10 years ago, it may have taken some massaging, I'm not sure. But for the most part, now, there's not a lot of complaints that we receive for them.
I live three houses down from one. I don't even know, honestly.
I just want to say in support of, starting with a lower number, if we get applications that, you know, end up being 50, I guess we'll know we undershot, right? But, but if we, if we, if we set it at 45 and we only had 22 apply, we're gonna, we're gonna wish we had started lower, like you suggest.
And that's, that's actually a very good point, Nick, is that, and, and if 50, we get 50 requests, 50 still may be too much, because we may do a lottery, give out half of them, and then realize this is about what we can handle, what our capacity is.
Can I, I need to interrupt for a sec. Your public hearing isn't open yet. This is just a time to ask questions, so we shouldn't, that's okay. We shouldn't have discussion back and forth. Not yet.
Sorry, okay. Forgive me, I apologize for stepping out of line there. So, yeah, okay.
So the 1% was basically based off of San Diego?
Essentially, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have another question. It has to do with this Section 9C that says HOA rules supersede. That's, my daughter lives in Surfside, and their HOA rules say no short-term rentals, but I was trying to reconcile that with the case law that the Coastal Commission has. They're clearly in the coastal zone. So is that just our feeling, or is that bestavely somewhere that HOA rules supersede?
The court decisions address the issue that no coastal approval was obtained before changes in ordinances were made. So the Coastal Commission has to weigh in on any proposal dealing with short-term rentals. That was the problem with the other cities. So the HOA rules apply because unless state law expressly says you cannot do this as part of a CCNRs, private property is free to regulate. So as of right now, state law does not prohibit CCNRs from prohibiting this.
Great.
We don't know if that will change.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. And I open the public hearing. The applicant is you?
It's us, yeah.
Are there any public comments?
My name is Casey Mungo. I live at 955 Heron Circle. I've been following this as it's gone through the, the legal system. I would caution excessive fees, because I have seen some, some writing about that could be used as a deterrent, which also restricts access to, to people, so I would just make sure that we have that under control. Regarding the number 1%, that would be, you know, it is arbitrary, but it can go both ways. You know, I have property that would greatly benefit from this, and, you know, hearing, just living here for the last 10 years, I haven't heard of an excessive amount of problems with short-term rentals. You know, the value of my personal property or my, my houses could be a half a million-dollar difference, whether this is, you know, done fairly, or if it's done in a way that really restricts it. So I do applaud, since I have followed a lot of the case law for this, talked to some of the attorneys that were involved in the cases, and I do think that the city of Seal Beach did a good job laying out rules that I feel like are fair. It's not a free-for-all for everybody. I think that it is done in a way where I don't mind putting in the work to justify it. So I will, I do want to say thank you guys for that. But it's a lot more than just restricting housing for, for people. I think that, you know, telling somebody what they can and can't do with their property is something that we need to hold tight, you know, and, you know, not just make rules because it's, you know, what some people prefer versus others. I think, I think that's important to keep in mind. So just my two cents on it, and again, I thank you guys. I think you guys did a great job with the rules, and it seems fair for someone like me who would be potentially applying for it. And it does have significant impacts for myself and my family, and so I just hope everybody, you know, keeps that in mind. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. I will now close the public. Oh, yeah, the applicant doesn't want to address any, again, correction. Yeah, I will not close the public hearing. We have discussion deliberation.
Yeah, I appreciate the public comment. I would say that I agree by and large, and my voting record certainly reflects that we like to let people do what they want to do with their property. I mean, that's kind of the American way. However, I think we could all agree that, I mean, our job is also to create the kind of community that we want to have and that we want, you know, that we think is best for what is Seal Beach. So we, there's a, there's a line that has to be drawn, and it's our, and it's our job to draw that line. So, yeah, I, yeah, I don't know, I just, regarding discussion, you know, I mean, it's almost like I'd want to look at a map and see, okay, what does 15 homes look like? What does 30 homes look like?
I can tell you that, one's on 13th, two on 14th. They're all like within a congested area.
Well, I'm saying if we open this up, okay, say we said 1,000 homes. So you could go, how many does 1,000 look like?
Right.
And so we're saying here that 45 homes. So if you're looking at a map of
Old Town and the Hill.
A old, yeah, Old Town and the Hill, and you're gonna pick 45 homes. Is that very many? It's not very many.
But they'll mostly end up in
They'll mostly end up in Old Town.
Yeah.
And so if you think about it, how many blocks are in Old Town? Anyone know?
17.
Well, there's 17 streets.
Times three.
Times three is 21.
No, 50.
No, 17 times 3. 51. That's like one per, one per block. That's pretty good math there, actually.
But it's 45 plus the 14.
Right.
One per, one per block.
I tend to agree, like, start off like a 22, 24, 25, whatever.
We can always increase it. I mean, I mean, the point is, if you get, if we get 100 applications and we know that the demand is there, again, I would say, I don't have people, you know, I don't talk to a lot of people. I know there are people who certainly want vacation rental, or short-term rentals. But, I mean, I don't, I don't hear it everywhere.
They may tell us to increase it. We may not have a choice.
Well, they may, or we may decide it's better for the community. I mean, we may decide if we say we start at 25, and then we do get 75 applications or something more, and then we say, look, okay, great, there's a demand out there. Let's see how this works. If there's no problems, then I would say, yes, absolutely, increase it. Because that's what the demand is, and that's what the committee wants, and I don't believe in solving problems that don't exist. So, yeah, I just, I just feel that it's, it's, it's a lot harder to work one way than the other. So, yeah, I think, I think what I would say is, I would almost write into this, I mean, my, my recommendation, because that's what we're being asked to do.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is I would recommend starting at, at something less than 1%, something like 25. But I would also require that it be reviewed annually or something like that. Yeah, go ahead, Nick. I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing stuff out.
It did say, there was an annual review, from what I remember.
Well, was that an annual review of the permit or annual review of the program? Those are different.
That's correct, an annual review of, of the permit.
Right, so I'm saying that
A review, so.
That, that particularly maybe even, I don't know if it should be annual, or it should be like after the first year, you do a review, and, and we look at the applications, and we look at how the, how it's, the administration of the program is going and everything else, and then at that time, decide what to do next. Increase it immediately, stay the course, increase it, and then come back the next year. But I think that's a prudent way of approaching it. I mean, I know it's more administrative work and stuff like that, but it seems prudent to me. Ms. Grayson?
Just for clarification.
Do that to Vice Chair.
Yeah.
I don't mean to step on your
Is the suggestion that the permit be reviewed annually, or that the city come back and examine the program to evaluate?
I'm not talking about the permit, I like the way this is written, and I agree that, I think staff did a good job of kind of rounding out the rules. But no, I'm specifically saying, because we don't know what that number is. We're sitting in this room, we don't know, you don't know, I don't know, Steve doesn't know, Nick doesn't know, the gentleman from the audience doesn't know. We don't know what that number is. So I'm saying, let's take it slow, and let's get her done. I mean, you know, over time, we'll get there.
Okay. Thank you.
So that, so again, my recommendation is back to that, is that I would say, because I don't know the number. I want to be very clear, I do not know what that number is. I don't know what that threshold is when it becomes something that maybe isn't what's best for our community. But I would, like I say, rather than just do what San Diego did, because, you know, San Diego's a great place. I love San Diego, but I don't know if they're right either. So I would propose starting small. I would pick a number, I would say 25.
I like 25.
Because it's an easy number, and then I would say, put the program out there, let's see with the applications. I don't know, we may see like, frankly, we may see, we may see 200 applications, in which case, we need to look at it again.
I would bet those 25 wouldn't want the number increased. I'm surprised those 14 aren't here tonight.
Um, well, they're okay, they're cool.
No, I mean, but more competition is gonna be, is gonna hurt them, so.
Competition can be good in this area, you know?
I don't think that'll be a problem.
Yeah, and I, and I, just for the sake of putting it on the record, that, I mean, the San Diego program, because it is a very different city and a very large place, the, they have a number of components to their program that, that we don't have, and I don't think we have a need for at this point.
But I will say, I want to be very clear, it's important to me that we figure this out and do it right. But let's just take it one step at a time.
Just one other thought, an annual review of the program or a review after one year, however you would choose to do it, would also allow you to go back, look back at the housing element and what has happened with that and the Reno requirements, because any number that is allowed under this ordinance will impact to some extent, obviously, how much housing is available for permanent, what we would call permanent, or not short-term housing. So that also gives you the opportunity to see how those two interests are balancing.
Is a year long enough? I mean, you know, it takes a while to get the program up and rolling and all that. Is it, should it be more like 18 months?
Yeah, I mean, it, in the time it takes to do things, you know, just off the cuff, you know, I can't imagine that we would be issuing permits before, I don't know, like April? Yeah, you know, to build it all out, make sure everyone got notification of the lottery, and, you know, all of that, all of that communication and giving everyone ample time takes time.
Yes, I would say Yes, I would say, start at twenty-five, eighteen month perfunctory, is that the right use of the word? That's a big word for me. Perfunctory review of the program, specifically the number of permits that are being issued. And at that time, we'll get some feedback probably from coastal, and there's a lot that's gonna go on here. I don't think we're done with this by even a measure, but that, that'll be my recommendation. So I don't know, if you're asking a recommendation, hey, that's what Michael Thomas recommends.
Anyone else?
No, can we, can we do that? Can we change the number?
You can make a recommendation that that goes to council.
That's my recommendation.
I like it, too. I assume the state will take this over.
Do you, do you have someone who can make a motion?
Oh, I'll, I'll make the motion, yeah. So we move to recommend to council that the program proceed as prescribed by the staff report with the change that the number, rather than one percent, be moved to twenty-five, which is a little over a half a percent, and that there be a mandatory review of that quantity of homes, as well as impacts to our housing element and other impacts of the program required after eighteen months.
Can I suggest you, you move to approve resolution twenty-two dash nineteen as drafted with the recommended change on the number per what you just said, which you stated very well, and I'm not gonna repeat.
Well, you stated the first part really well, and I don't want to have to repeat that, but I'd say, so it's, it's remove, we move to?
Approve.
Approve.
Approve the staff report or?
Resolution twenty-two dash nineteen.
Oh, that's what it is, yeah. So, so I met, I recommend approving this, the resolution on this item with the revisions that I, that I recommend it. That's my motion.
I'll second it. Okay, Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Masetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
This motion carries both votes, four votes yes. And on this item, there is no appeal, because this will automatically go to the city council as a recommendation.
Thank you.
And I recommend you speaking to council as well, because again, there's, there's a lot to work, a lot, a lot going on here. Thank you.
Onto item C, conditional use permit twenty-two dash eight at two thirty-seven Main Street. Is there a report?
Yes, Associate Planner Quavis will be presenting this evening.
Thank you, Chair Miller and Planet Commissioners. Tonight's item is condition use permit twenty-two dash eight. It's a request for a conditional use permit to allow the sale and dispensing of beer and wine for an ABC type forty-one alcohol license for onsite consumption in conjunction with an existing restaurant located at two thirty-seven Main Street and the Main Street specific plan zoning area. The image in front of you is a site plan showing you where the restaurant is located. So the restaurant, the subject parcel is approximately eleven thousand two hundred ninety-two square feet in size and is located on the southwest corner of Main Street and Electric Avenue. The site is occupied by three separate structures with the subject building located at the center of the lot and maintains frontage from both Main Street and Electric Avenue. The subject parcel is generally surrounded by commercial uses to the northeast and south with residential uses to the west across the alley. This is a site plan of the, of the, of the business. So the applicant is seeking a condition use permit type forty-one license for onsite consumption. And the business is known as McKenna's Tea Cottage. The subject business has been in operation since 2015 and has operated as a restaurant without an alcohol license since its, its inception. The type forty-one beer and wine alcohol license will allow for a greater variety with beverage choices and will be used to complement the food menu items. The proposed use is allowed subject to the commission's approval of this CUP application. The use is physically adequate and compatible with the existing commercial uses along Main Street. So the image in front of you is the floor plan of the restaurant. So the yellow shaded area on the plan before you represents the indoor restaurant area and the green shaded area represents the outdoor restaurant area. The restaurant can accommodate twenty-seven patrons indoor and forty-nine patrons outdoor for a total of seventy-six patrons. The restaurant currently operates daily from eleven AM to four PM. However, as a part of this request, they're also changing, requesting the changing of the operating hours from seven AM to three PM, seven days a week, along with the approval of the alcohol sales. So the city of Seal Beach municipal code requires each alcoholic beverage establishment to obtain approval of a CUP prior to issuance of an ABC license for the state of California. Onsite alcohol consumption will be restricted within the premises of the indoor and outdoor areas of the restaurant only. Conditions have been imposed on the establishment to ensure the proper service of alcohol to patrons and is in compliance with city council policy six hundred dash one. The proposed use is in compliance with the general plan, service, commercial, land uses definition that encourages commercial areas to provide a broad range of retail and service needs for the community. So this is just a street view of the restaurant. This is the view from Main Street. You can see the close up on the right. And this would be the patio area and in foreground and the background would be the indoor area. This next view is from, looking at it from Electric Avenue. So this shows the parking lot area and in the center would be the entrance off of Electric and then to the right in the trellis area is the secondary smaller patio outdoor area. So as a part of our analysis, Seal Beach municipal code requires alcohol beverages about establishment to contain an approval of the CUP prior to issuance of an ABC license. And also the Seal Beach municipal code requires any new licenses issued to be compliant with city council policy six hundred dash one, which requires establishments to be one hundred feet away from residential areas. Or a conditional use permit may be approved for an alcohol related use where the applicant establishes that the operation of the business would not interfere with the quiet enjoyment of property by residents. Currently, the subject, the subject establishment currently measures approximately thirty-five feet away from the nearest residential property to the west. However, the applicant has established that the operation will not be detrimental to the quiet enjoyment of property by residents by maintaining the limited hours of operation from seven AM to three PM will primarily be open during breakfast and lunch hours or basically brunch hours. They also maintain that there'll be no significant increase in noise levels as foreseen due to the limited hours of operation and the location of the primary entrance along a Main Street. The distance to residential properties is similar to other restaurant establishments serving alcohol beverages along Main Street. And the Seal Beach Department, Seal Beach Police Department has indicated that no significant cause for this location were noted and that no objections for this request and that there are no objections objections with this request so long as the consumption is contained onsite. So it's our recommended action that the, the Plan Commission adopt resolution twenty-two dash eighteen approving condition use permit twenty-two dash eight. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Is there much remodeling going on with this project or is it keeping it pretty much the same, right?
The applicant has noted that it might be refreshed, but there's no real remodel. They'll be working with the existing footprint that they have over the years.
I'll now open the public hearing. Applicant's not here, I assume. Is anyone who want to address the commission? Mayor Komic? No? Good. I'll now close the public hearing. Discussion deliberation. Motion and second?
I like the idea. I mean, I like it there.
Makes sense.
I'll move to approve the resolution or the?
Twenty-two dash?
Twenty-two, CUP twenty-two dash eight.
I'll second it.
Vice Chair Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Masetti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Chair Miller, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries four votes yes.
Senior Assistant City Attorney Grayson?
Yes, there is a ten day appeal period of this approval and it starts running tomorrow.
Thank you. Is there a director's report?
Thank you, Chair, no report tonight.
Any commission concerns? I have a question. Why do we start at seven? Can we change it? I'd like to sit around and wait, I'm like, I just want to get, I just want to go do this, you know? Is that an option? Is that something we can, that maybe you could?
I don't know, I mean, I, 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 cities do set their start times, I don't know if there's a particular procedure.
Like, wouldn't you rather start at six o'clock and, and, and get out of here an hour earlier, right?
I, I serve at the pleasure of the council, so.
I mean, can we look into that?
My days are numbered, I don't want to.
I know, yeah. I mean, if it, if it's like unanimous that everybody wants to start at six, is if, can we see if that's a possibility?
Sure, we could see, yeah.
I'm, I'm sure you, you guys all like to be home an hour earlier. Not a big deal for us, but you guys worked all day long.
I do start to have a hard time with words at this time of day.
Not that we don't, but yeah.
Three o'clock in the afternoon.
We, we can, we can take a look and see if if there's some sort of policy in place and if not, can?
If it's in your code, which I, sorry to say, I don't recall, it would have to be amended, but?
Oh, I'm sure, oh, I'm sure there's a process and, you know, have to give notice and have a hearing and all that stuff, but.
We can, we can certainly take a look and get some historical perspective. Yeah.
Anybody else? That's it. I'll now adjourn the planning commission meeting to December third, two thousand twenty-two at seven PM. Thanks.
Thank you.